Let us stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our first meeting of 2025 Pike Township School Board. We will start with our on the agenda with our to the office administered by our board attorney, Janine Carriage.
Could the newly elected and re-elected board members please rise? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear or affirm
I solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the state of Indiana
the Constitution of the state of Indiana
and the laws of the United States and the state of Indiana
and the laws of the United States and the state of Indiana
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office
I will faithfully execute the duties of my office
as a member of this governing body, so help me God.
As a member of this governing body, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations and welcome. It is now official.
Welcome, my boy.
Next, we'll move on to election of officers. We will start off with the president position. Are there any nominees for the president position?
I, Mr. Anderson, would like to recommend Mr. Anderson to be our 2025 president for MST Pike Township.
Second?
I accept the nomination for president. Are there any other nominations? We'll go on to vote. All in favor for myself as the president of the 2025 board president, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, Carrie. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go on to vice president. And I would like to nominate Dr. Webster as vice for the 2025 school board year.
I accept.
Second?
We have a first and a second. We'll go on to vote. All in favor? Are there any other nominations? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations? Angela Barnes.
I decline.
Alright. So we have a nomination and a decline. Any other nominations? We'll move on to vote. All in favor for Dr. Webster as the vice president of our next 2020-25 school board year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, Carrie. Thank you very much, Dr. Webster. Lastly, we have secretary. Are there any nominations for secretary for the 2025 school board year? It's Angela Barnes. Second. Are there any other nominations?
Do you accept?
I accept.
Alright.
Second.
Second, we have first and second. We'll go on to vote for Angela Barnes as the secretary for the 2025 school board year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Barnes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our board appointments. We have the recommendation for treasurer, Mr. Greg Foster, our chief financial officer. We have our deputy treasurer, Ms. Monet Gray. And we have our foresee, our general counsel, Barnes and Thornburg, Janine Carriage. And then we have our special education law church, Hiddle. I believe that we have a representative for them here with us today. Also, we'll start off with our ISBA policy liaison. Do we have any? Anyone wanting to work with that committee? Alright. We will fill that at a later time. The ISBA legislative liaison. Do we have any board members who would like to fill that committee?
I'd be willing to serve on that.
Do we have another? Usually we carry two with this committee. I will also be willing to serve on that committee with Steve as well. Next, we have the National Affiliate Advocacy Network. Do we have any board members who would like to fill that committee? We don't have any as of right now, so we will look into filling that later. District Policy Committee.
I would like to serve in that role, please.
So do I.
And if needed, I can also perhaps use the, do the ISBA policy if they don't conflict.
Okay. And lastly, Negotiations Committee.
I'll continue to serve there.
Okay.
I can also serve.
I'm sorry.
I'll serve there.
Ms. Kelly and Ms. Wilson.
On the district, I do have, on the district, the policy committee, we're only doing two there.
That's all you normally do is two.
Alright, so now we have our appointees. Are there any questions or comments? Alright, so we'll move on to vote for board appointments. All in favor for the appointed committee people, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Alright, that concludes our reorganization part of the meeting. The motion to adjourn the reorganization part of the meeting, so moved, Mr. President.
Check it.
Now we move on to our regularly scheduled school board meeting, starting off with, for the good of the cause, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see all of you. Did you call me? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, for the good of the cause, I'm sorry, Sarah. So if there are any patrons who would like to take this platform to take three minutes to discuss anything for the good of the cause, you may do so at this time by stating your name.
Good evening, President Anderson, member of the school board, Dr. Young. My name is Ben Church and I am the vice president of membership for Pike Classroom Teachers Association. The General Assembly for Indiana just started this week and there are already bills that will have a big impact on Pike Township. House Bill 1136 will dissolve IPS, Gary Schools, and three other districts in the state and all of their schools will be turned into charter schools. This would also happen to other districts in the future if more than 50% of the students who live in a district do not attend the schools in their home district. Many families across the state have chosen the traditional public school option because they appreciate the community they live in and they want, um, appreciate the local control that they have over choosing how their school districts operate. This bill negates citizens' votes by eliminating all of the elected school board members that they chose to operate their schools and replaces them with governor-appointed positions. Public schools do not turn away students, but rather make sure that all students get a free and appropriate public education. Charter schools are not required to accept all students and they can pick and choose which students they will allow to attend their schools. This bill will be very detrimental to many students because they will no longer have access to education because they were not selected for the new charter school and may not have the funds or transportation needs for other education options. Charter schools struggle with teacher retention. A big part of this is due to charter school teachers not being able to join a professional union and having someone there to support them and advocate for them to have better pay, benefits, and better working conditions. I've worked with many teachers who have worked at charter schools previously and many of them talk about how they felt like the school took advantage of teachers and how they were forced to do things that were shady. This bill may only be affecting five school districts right now, but these takeovers of schools will not stop with those five districts. Another bill that we need to stop is House Bill 1229, which would eliminate property taxes and thus eliminate funds from referendums. In May, the citizens in Pike voted to approve a referendum to increase their property taxes. They chose to do this because they value the education the community gets from Pike Township schools. They wanted to make sure they had high-quality educators in the classroom, even though the state wasn't budgeting enough funds to run the district effectively. The community voted to have great schools and they deserve to have great schools. I am asking all of the Pike Township School Board members and all of the Pike families to partner with Pike Classroom Teachers Association to stop any proposed laws that are bad for public education and our students. We must stand together and make sure that the legislators hear our concerns and only pass legislation that is beneficial to all of our students, families, and teachers in Pike Township and across the state of Indiana. Your voice matters and together we can make education thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Is there anyone else for the good of the cause? Alright, we'll move on to spotlight on Pike, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening again. It's wonderful to see you all. Happy New Year. And we have a lot of exciting things that happened prior to break and during break. Prior to break, our students from the Nathaniel Jones Early Learning Center visited Robin Run to spread holiday cheer. All of our preschoolers sang a holiday song for the residents and it was just an absolute joy to behold. The residents loved it and the students loved performing as well. Robin Run could not have been more hospitable and welcomed me to our Nathaniel Jones students and staff, so we want to thank them for their continued partnership. Our Pike High School Boys and Girls Swim Teams placed third in the Marion County Championship, which was held on December 21st. We had several individual and relay first, second, and third place finishes, so we're extremely proud of them. We also had four of our Pike High School Girls wrestlers placed at sectionals and qualified to advance to regional competition. Alana Devine is in the running for the IndyStar Girls Basketball Player of the Week after a stellar performance in the game against Lafayette Jeff where she scored 22 points and had three steals. So there's still time to vote for her up until noon tomorrow and you can vote as many times as you'd like, so we would love to see her win that she is definitely deserving. At last but never least, we would like to thank the donors listed on this evening's agenda. Chartwells provided support with nutritional drinks and shakes valuing $81,000 for our sports program. The Community of Christ Church donated $1,000 worth of gift cards for our families at Dearborn Elementary and Eagle Creek Elementary Schools. The Ladies of the Lepotopkis Society donated $750 worth of gift cards to support families at Snacks Crossing Elementary School. One Fellowship Church donated $1,000 to Snacks Crossing Elementary School. Our Ortho Indy YMCA donated over $10,000 worth of gifts to support Pike families. The Pike Township Education Foundation donated $241 to Central Elementary School. And they also continued their tradition of donating a book for every kindergartner within the district. They go out to our kindergarten classrooms and read those books to students before gifting them. It's a great tradition and that had a value of $3,300. And we're extremely thankful to everyone for these generous donations and their continued support.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we'll move to reports to the board. Action item A, I'm sorry, report A. First reading of the board of education policies, Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Young, happy new year to you all. I have the last of the fall policies for your review. The majority of these policies actually pertain specifically to federal grant updates. So if you have any questions for me regarding any of these updates, please feel free to reach out to me and I will get all the information that you need, otherwise, and I will bring these back to you at our next board meeting for approval. These policies include 1130, 3113, 4113, 1230, 5136.01, 6110, 6111, 6114, 6325, 7310, and 7450.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, Dr. Bishop.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are items that are going to be revisions for grants, is that what you?
So the federal government has made adjustments to some of the requirements of federal grants that are received by a district. So these policies update the necessary changes per the federal government.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Bishop. Report B, do, we're gonna have Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would like to invite Mr. Foster and Dr. Hunter up as well. You'll see on the board report, we have a presentation from Power School. And you may have seen in the news today, I know WTHR sent out a report and other news outlets will, I'm sure, hear pretty soon that there was a data breach with Power School. So in my conversation with them today, I asked that they not present. We have some questions for them that we'd like to get answered and feel more confident before we invite them back. So his, a little bit of history and I'll invite them to share a little bit as well. Dating back for as long as I can remember, our HR department and our business department have used different software and different programs. They don't talk to one another. So as we look at doing reports and even things required from the IDOE, you know, we're really relying on conversations and looking at all these different software programs because on HR side, we really like this one. Business office, this one works best, but programs such as Power School and other companies sort of encompass an HR and a business component. So in, in over the last several years, Pike has separated, has operated in sort of different programs or silos. The charge I gave to our team, our HR and our business team, was that we needed to move forward. I charged them to do research and let's find a solution to the problem that we have. And through their, their work over, gosh, for a year, year and a half, maybe around the end of November, we settled on Power School as being the information system that we want to bring to the board and get your feedback on. Well, between the end of November and when we actually got them scheduled, we, we, we had that, that data breach. So that's the reason why they're not here today for that reason and we want to follow up, obviously get as much information as we can. And if we feel, if and when we feel comfortable, we'll have them come back and present to you all. But with that, I would love to invite Dr. Hunter and Mr. Foster to share a little bit about the rationale of why we went down this road.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, as you said, he had charged us with looking at three critical areas that we had to look at, or we needed to look at to evaluate our departments to see how we can move and operate more efficiently and effectively. One area was in the employee data management area. The second area was a comprehensive human resource tracking and interdepartmental data sharing were the three areas that we looked at to see how we can get a system to support that. The current system that we have does not adequately support the upload and maintenance of those essential employee information such as certifications, background checks, I9s, W2s, so on and so forth. And so as a result of that, it doesn't create a centralized data, centralized location easily that we can access for state reports such as OSHA, the OEWS report, which is the occupational employee and wage statistics report. So pulling that information together becomes cumbersome and repeats efforts on staff. The second area was a comprehensive HR tracking. A current system that tracks things such as our licensures, continuing education, performance evaluations, those things too, which are essential for, for reporting. We don't have a centralized location that we can easily access that information. So the one area was employee data management. The second area was a comprehensive HR tracking. And the third area that we look at is the departmental sharing, interdepartmental sharing. And in that interdepartmental sharing, we feel that the need to improve and streamline our processes that reduces man-hours, that we need to, reduces man-hours, that we can use our people more efficiently. The HR team has, has to create and or input identical information into two different systems. That processes reduces the efficiency and the ability to attack other more important issues that come up at the time. We have to input new employee salary information into one system, FMS, and then put that same employee information into a whole other information, a whole other system called frontline. So as we're putting one set of information in one system, taking Justin Hunter, putting him over in this system, they have to turn around and put all the same information into another system and those systems are not talking. And so we believe that having a system that creates an environment, have an environment where that information is interchangeable, reduces duplication of work and our people can move and work more efficiently and effectively. I don't know if there's anything, Dr. Young.
I think, I think one of the things you shared is, is the duplication, man-hours, but it also cuts down on human error as well, right? So when humans are involved and I, I may have entered correctly over here, I may not have entered it correctly over there. And obviously, anytime we're trying to pull data, whether it's for the board or for the state of Indiana, we want to make sure the information is accurate. And sometimes, for as long as I can remember, you know, there are times when just because the information's entered in different places, there, there errors that, that are made. So we're just trying to cut down, or what I'm trying to do is cut down, be more efficient and be more accurate from that standpoint. Did you have anything? Yeah. So any questions right now? I know exactly, we didn't bring Power School, but any questions we can answer at this time?
So after Power School handles their power issue, you, you feel you're gonna go with them?
Well, I would say that in November, so as we looked at, again, there's nothing that oh, Bruce. So for the business office says, yep, you got everything we want. And HR, yep, you've got, there isn't one. And I think that's been the stalemate is because the two departments couldn't get on the same page and get a, a solution. They've been able to kind of go their own way. We have some questions. One, obviously being the, with the data breach, so what happened? What are you guys doing to, you can't make any guarantees or promises, but what have you done to help ensure to the best of our ability that, you know, you guys have some safeguards to keep those things from happening? We also want to ask just about some, the transition. We also want to talk about the level of support. So there's a few questions we have now that we didn't have back in November, but I, I, I can't, so I can't really say yes, that we would bring them back. I just don't know. We've operated the way we have. It's not ideal, but I would say I would rather stay put and do what we're doing now than to make a hasty decision on one that I just don't feel super comfortable with.
May I ask Dr. Hunter a question? Dr. Hunter, as it relates to the, the data piece, the updating, I think Dr. Young mentioned it as support. When you were investigating and doing your research on it, how did you feel about the element of support after the system is in place?
Well, when a system is in place, I think we'll have, whatever system, Dr. Young decided to go with, will greatly support. For an example, upon my arrival, one example I can give you is
And you could talk too about, I think you'd want to talk about Power School.
Yeah.
So based on that question, what you saw with Power School, what was your level of confidence?
My, my level of confidence with Power School was pretty high.
Okay.
I believe that they, they, they provided information that led me to believe that they could do it adequately.
So this will bring us into the 21st century?
Yes, for, yes, an example would be, if I may share an example, example would be having a system where we can easily track teacher licensing. When I came to the district, first thirty months, the DOE requires, stakeholder requires that we ensure that people are licensed in those positions. Secondly, they require that we do background checks every five years on current staff. And so when I first came, finding teachers, finding individuals that license had expired for maybe a year or two. So a system that be, I believe the Power School system would help provide a means where we can track that information more easily, more readily instead of potentially going through each staff file or creating Google Docs and, you know, using that method to try to track that.
The, the training system has to be in place as well? Will there be a training?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and I think, again, if it's Power School or someone else, when they present, those are all the types of things that we'll have them present, you know, to the board as well. But yes, that's one of the things that they promised was a training, but then also a support system as well. Even after the training is done, if we're not quite sure what's going on or if we need help, how accessible will you be as well? And then also, we've had some conversations and done our sort of background check, talking to other school districts and, hey, what has your experience been?
My last question. We are blessed by our taxpayers in Pike Township. The Pikean community agreed to give us a referendum. Will we be using referendum dollars to take care of this?
No, no, no. That was not one of the three pillars, so referendum dollars would not go towards this.
I was just asking because we talked about systems
Yes.
in, in, in the referendum situation, and this is a system, and I was just wondering.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So I have a question. So do you feel that Power School was transparent in explaining why they had the breach?
Well, one of the reasons we wanted to pause is we just haven't had a chance to talk to them about it. If you all have questions that you might have, if you forward them on to us, you know, we'll make sure that when we get a chance, we're hoping to maybe touch base with them even as early as next week. We'll pose all those questions. We want to track, you know, all the responses. I think even, I can't remember who it was, but there were actually some recommend, who provides the recommended questions to ask Power School? It was, there was, some organizations have actually provided school districts that work with Power School, specific, remember what? Specific questions, when you talk to them, here's some things that you'll want to know. So we're gonna review those questions. If you all have any that you say, hey, here's a question I would have, please forward them to us and then that way we can make sure we get those addressed as well.
I have a question as well. Maybe this is more for Mr. Heck. Do we have the infrastructure to support Power School?
Yeah, we were involved in that process for selecting all of the vendors and going through all of that and we are prepared to support whatever system is selected.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So it's being looked at for some of the, the more the office-type systems to replace them. Are there any other systems that we use that it would be a potential replacement for also?
Other than like the business office and HR, so any others that you guys?
Any others?
So they, they have the capacity, the ability to do performance evaluations like for Stanford, Stanford Success, ASAP frontline, staff attendance, job postings,
Okay.
our application where people go on and look on our job postings and then be able to apply for jobs. So they can be ASAP frontline, which one side does, staff attendance, the other side does job posting. So they can, they can do that. They have the ability to do our evaluation systems with that as well.
Okay.
So really, really that, no, to answer your question outside of sort of the central office thing?
Okay.
No, it, it would, it would help bring some of those individual systems under, under the one.
Okay. And I know you said we can send you questions. Is there any chance we could see that list that you were given of the questions to ask?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm trying to remember who sent, where I saw that. Was it? Yeah, absolutely. So what we'll do, if you'll forward that to me and I'll forward to you all, that this is what was recommended, that if you're talking to Power School, these are the questions you should ask.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll make sure we include those too. Yep.
A two-part question. In, in the possibility that we do not go with, with the Power School, it seems like the streamlining of their, of their program is something that we very much need. Is there, well,
Other systems?
Yeah, other systems that we could possibly look at?
There, there were, how many presented to you all?
Three.
There, there were three. So, so one of the things that I share with them, if they can't unanimously agree, then I'll make a decision and I'll present that to the board. And so what Power School was, was we, right guys, we made a grid and literally checked off sort of, you know, the most. But there were a total of
Three.
three that actually got to the point where they, over the last year, year and a half, did presentations for HR teams and for our business teams. So yeah, there, there are some other options as well.
Then the second part, you kind of hit on this a little bit earlier. If you, if we do go with Power School, can you add to that report and update on what they're going to do to protect themselves from further future data breaches?
Yeah, and, and what I would say is, I would like to have them come back and present and I would ask for that they present that information to the board.
Okay.
So that you all can ask questions as well. But, you know, obviously we'll, we'll get some answers ourselves, so we'll be able to share what, what our, what our responses are too.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Follow up on what you asked. So you said there are three other potential systems. Are they?
Are two other, two other, three.
Oh, three total.
Three total.
Are the other two also cloud-based systems?
Yeah, they're all cloud-based. They're all cloud-based, yeah. And that's one of the questions too, you know. Were you more vulnerable than, were you just unlucky? Or was it that you were easier target?
They would need the same questions, yeah, these other people, yeah.
I don't know, but that's one of the questions I have and I would, you know, help and rely on our IT team too, right? Were you unlucky? And if they would have targeted them, they would have gotten them too? Was it, or was it that you were an easier target? Was it, or was it that you were an easier target?
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate you fellas for, for making sure we, we move in a progressive way in technology. Because it's going to be something, it's going to be very, very prevalent here in the next five years in, in, in school systems.
Yeah, it will.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter, Dr. Young, and Mr. Foster. Now we'll move on to our action items. Action Item A, minutes of the Board, Education, Public Hearing and Regular Meeting, December 12th.
I believe we accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
First and the second. We'll move on to vote. All in favor to accept the minutes from the December 12th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action Item B, approval of the Board of Education Policies, Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, once again, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Young. I seek your approval of Action Item B, Approval of the Board of Education Policies as presented.
So move.
Second.
First and the second, are there any questions or comments? No questions or comments, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bishop. Action Item C, the Human Resource Report, Dr. Hunter.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the HR report as presented.
So move.
Second.
First and the second, due to the confidentiality of the HR report, we won't entertain any questions. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Would like to combine Action Items D and E, Contracts and Donations, Crowdfunding, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. I recommend approval of the contracts and the donations as presented.
I move we accept them as presented.
Question?
We have to get a second.
Got a second also?
I'll second.
Second, all right. Any questions or comments?
Question? Thank you, Mr. President. What is the contract for Barnes and Thornburg?
That's our legal service agreement.
I understand, but what, what does that cost for us yearly?
I'd have to get back with you on the annual cost for, for that specific attorney.
Beg pardon? What'd you say, ma'am?
It's based on the number of hours, the billable hours.
That would be catalog, wouldn't it?
I mean, are you saying what's the typical?
Yeah, what, what, what did we do this year with, with them as it relates to resources?
So, yeah, so like they, you know, obviously, Mrs. Kerr is part of Barnes and Thornburg, so our, our general counsel. So anything, again, with the exception of specialization, any legal issues or guidance, you name it. So we, if you, like, if you'd like, like a, like a total sum of what we paid them out for the year, we can, we can get that for you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any more questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to vote for Actions Items D and E. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for Action Items D and E. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Lastly, Board Member Items. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I think public education is under a great assault. We have a great district. And, and I think in many cases, we have to be proactive. And with all that is going on, people might not agree with what I'm about, about to say, but I do think Pike Township Board, President, needs to come up with a statement to let the community know where they stand, so that the community can embrace whatever we have to go through in the next sixty to ninety days with the assault that's on public education. We cannot sit by and not say something. But something needs to be said in an intelligent way, that we are proud of Pike Township and public education and, and hopefully try our best to inform the community in a way to where the community supports the school district. Because the less you give them information about it, the quicker it's going to take over. So when you put a statement out there, it lets the community know that you are concerned about, about the system and the children in the system and all that needs to take place to keep Pike solvent and away from that type of behavior of a government takeover of public education. I think it's necessary, maybe you all don't, but I think it's necessary that we send, put a statement out there, letting people know that Pike is sovereign and we believe, wholeheartedly, this board believes wholeheartedly in public education. And we'll do everything in our community to uphold that. I think that makes sense.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Wilson, Wilson.
Because I am new on the board, I'll give you guys some more information once I'm grounded. So at this point, I would just pass on to Angela.
All right. Ms. Barnes.
First, I'd like to welcome Ms. Wilson and Mr. Hooper to our board. Secondly, congratulations to Dr. Moore on becoming our Vice President and Mr. Anderson for holding your role as President.
That might have should have happened, but he's...
Okay, I don't know where my brain is this weird. And thank you, Dr. Webster, for serving so long, I appreciate that. I think our donors, that was a nice list of donors there for supporting our schools.
Yes, it was.
And last but not least, vote for Alana Devine. I just checked, she's second. Pike family, we can do better than that. We can do better than second. Let's get Alana Devine in as our Athlete of the Week.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Dr. Webster, Vice President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Listen, again, Happy New Year to all of those that we have not said Happy New Year to. Welcome aboard to our new Board Members. And just wanting to weigh in on Dr. Moore's comment and statements on this takeover. We have been in conversation with actually quite a few people, and even clergy. And I think Mr. Anderson and I had a conversation as early as latest today as we talk about going forward, what really needs to happen that relates to our community. And, but one, but, but one of the, one of the gravest things we can do is show up downtown, especially, especially when they are talking about this building and when it's before the house. When we show up downtown and, and flood the chamber, then they understand that we are serious. We can make statements, but if we don't show up, they, they fear numbers. And, 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 and we know that. And when we show up, usually things happen because we show concern. And so, because the truth of the matter is, those who are sponsoring bills, some of them don't even look like us. And so when we show up, that, that's important. So we, so we're, we're looking at putting together a plan for all of us so that we can show up. And hopefully, we can get this thing put to bed. Say something nice to someone this weekend, the rest of the weekend. Never know how your words might talk them off the edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Mr. Hooper.
All right, so a, as a new Board Member, really tonight, I just have some thank yous I want to say. First of all, I know they were recognized at the, the last meeting of last year, but I wanted to thank Ms. Lomax and Mr. Hop for their service over the years. I had the chance to sit in the seats out there and watch them serve for all their time on the school board. They were excellent school board members. Pike is better because of them, and I know they're still going to be involved with Pike. And so I just wanted to thank them for their service, had that chance. Also wanted to thank all the community. Running for office, putting your name out there is a bit of a daunting thing. And getting all the people that I got to talk to, especially at early voting, when the line was wrapped around the buildings, I know Tony was out there with me all the ones. It was so much fun. And so it just reaffirmed why we love our community so much. And so to your points, Dr. Webster, I don't think rallying our community is going to be tough. That, that they are a united community and, and they support public education. And, and I believe they're going to be supportive of us in that. Also do want to obviously thank all the donors. I personally love seeing three, obviously, we've got the big donations from Chartwells and some of the other large ones, but seeing the donations from local faith-based communities that are supporting our community, supporting our children. Particularly for me, it's heartwarming that the church where my family worships, One Fellowship, was on there. So I like that, being my first night on the board, seeing their donation out there. And so just appreciate that, appreciate all that support. And then very personally, just because I know he's watching from Southern Indiana, and this will be the only one he watches, love you, Dad.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back. Again, we are, we have been given a charge from at least two of our Board Members of a call to action. And we've had time to rest and refresh and reflect. So now it's time to come back this New Year, ready to work and go hard for our students, hard for our community, hard for the children that live in this district, hard for the teachers that live in this, that work and live in this district, and for the community that put us in this position to work for them and to recognize that, again, we are, as was stated, a sovereign body that was put here by the community to do the work. So let us do what we were elected to do. Again, welcome back, welcome to our new members. Looking forward to serving with you all. And also, take care of yourself, because we do have a fight, we do have a journey, but there is self-care involved along the way, so. Also, the donors, I, as I was reading the list, that is awesome. We have people that support our community so strongly. And we want to continue to be worthy of their support.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first and foremost like to congratulate Mrs. Wilson, also Mr. Hooper. In your new roles, you both have been faithfully serving the district under other positions, but congratulations to you both. I'm very proud to share that for the second year in a row, we have a graduation rate of over ninety-five point five percent. When you look at... MSD of Pike Township, and you look at how, look at our data, you look at the, our makeup and just how diverse we are, languages spoken. When you look at what data says that a high-performing school district looks like, but what a lower-performing school district looks like based on demographics, we're not supposed to do what we've done. And I haven't found another school district that looks like ours that has performed at the level that we have. So very proud, excited, but like I've shared with the team last year, you know, until you can do it for about five years in a row, it's, it's, it's difficult to say that, that, that you, you're, you're the model urban school district. That's the goal. And I'm not afraid to, to share that, and just kudos to the team. They work very hard, they know that no matter what we do, I'm always asking, you know, how can we get better? How can we improve? And they just keep on bouncing, they keep coming back every day. They just keep on coming back. And I'm so appreciative for their commitment and buying into the vision that all of you have and the charge that you've given us. So let me be brief, I, I know that the college playoffs are going on, so let me share that. I was going to talk about House Bill eleven thirty-six, so I'm going to, to, to not. I've never seen anything like it in my twenty-seven years, but it's, it's, it's been a buildup. Not only do we have those types of bills, but there's also bills every single year that are passed by our state legislators that has a price tag that's not paid for. So when you think about things like legislation that talks about, it requires us to share operation dollars with children that may live in Pike but attend a charter school, that comes at a price tag in Pike Township of over, I think, close to a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it has nothing to do with enrollment. When you think about legislation that says, hey, you know, there's some requirements now that you have pertaining to tackling truancy, well, we had to add staff because of that. All of these unfunded mandates, one after another, after another, after another, makes it very challenging and difficult to hit the goal that I just talked about. So as you're having conversations with legislators, one of, one of the things I've shared is anything that's a mandate that has a price tag to it, it needs to be funded. It needs to be funded. I also want to just mention very quickly that Mrs. Wilson has come, and Mr. Wilson, they've come with treats, so for Board Members, also for, for staff. If you go in Conference Room C after this meeting, then there's something special for you in, in celebration of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, I can't go out like that. Let me go back and regroup and tell you, thank you so much for your support. As Mr. Hooper stated, it was, it was an interesting campaign. I enjoyed every minute of it. And to see the abundance of people that supported me and came out and voted for me and gave me their confidence, there's no way I could come here and say, I'm not going to say anything. So I have to, you know, refrain from that. But I want, also I want to tell you, I was part of that, those teachers that went down there and marched in our red because we wanted some changes made. We've got the charter people coming at us, we gotta come together. We have to put those red shirts back on, whatever color you want. And we have to do what he said, let's go down there. And let's let our presence be known, because we won't be known if we are talking amongst ourselves and not moving to the front of the line downtown and letting them know what we need to be... Because we cannot allow those kids, they're not in our district, but we cannot, as teachers and as parents and as staff, allow them to push them aside and give them the crumbs. It's just not fair and it's not right.
Mr. President, may I? On the twenty-third, I won't be here because Senator Fatty Codora, Dr. Pat Payne, Dr. Jim Sherrick from IU is going to be at our church talking about dissecting the charter situation for the community. Again, we did that once, and so we're coming back now for a second trip to inform the Pike Inn community how this charter school can affect and damage education in Pike Township. So we're going to be doing that at six o'clock on the twenty-third. I won't be in the meeting with, with you, I'll be with those working with that particular situation to inform our community and to help our community understand that this is very serious. And I wish, Dr. Young, you would, you would speak out against this. I know it, it can hurt us very badly. And we're going to have to stand up in a way to where it's not about party, it's about children now. And it's about children, property, and facility. And we have to come up with some type of strategic plan to market Pike Township as one of the greatest public entities in education in our state. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So again, congratulations and welcome to our new Board Members, and also welcome back, everyone. I appreciate your resilience, running a school district is not easy. So I do appreciate your resilience, I see it. Also, to the unprecedented challenges that we have on the state level and city level, we are aware, thank you for the work that you've already put in, that everyone has already put in to speak against charter schools. But this unprecedented challenge is going to take an unprecedented response, and we will have that. So stay tuned. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. President.
Second, all right, thank you.